We're here this afternoon in work session to discuss the Ad Hoc Diversity Committee's recommendations. I will acknowledge that we do have a quorum, although we will not be taking any official action today as a board. We'll be discussing and arriving at some consensus perhaps, but there will be no formal votes or any formal action taken. I understand Mr. Bickford is on his way, so he'll be joining us in progress. So getting back to the work at hand, we received a final report back in December from the Ad Hoc Committee on Diversity. And at this time, I'd like to discuss the recommendations that the committee has put forth for board consideration and see what we want to do as a board moving forward. So with that, we'll just begin discussion.
We have staff available, obviously, here to guide the discussion or respond to questions. We have the PowerPoint that was used in the board meeting back in December, if there's any need to review any of that information. I know there's a list of possible recommendations that were part of the report, and we could use that as a guide if you'd want to look at any of those or start with any of those things to discuss. Obviously, for us, one of the number-one priorities would be to close any disproportionality among our students on academic achievement, and there'd be a wide variety of ways that that might occur through just quality instruction, as well as some of the recommendations that might be in the report. So that'll be an absolute focus of staff, and then we're certainly looking for your direction on anything else. And with that, I'll, you know, we'll be glad to entertain questions. We have staff here, our diversity task force leaders. We also want to thank our diversity task force community members that have participated in the process. We've appreciated their input.
And just in terms of organization, for each of you, you have a copy of the actual full final report, and it talks about what the charge was from the board. And then, beginning on page five, it begins with Recommendation One, and then there are several effective practices listed there to establish a more culturally inclusive community. And then the research and rationale are included under each. So in terms of format, you have a recommendation, effective practices identified from research, a rationale, and then more specific information about the research. And then where we could start, in the very back of your report, pages fifteen and sixteen, is where the group started to talk about specifically what action would we take? What could we recommend to the board to really have moved some of these recommendations forward? So listed under Potential Action Steps and Future Considerations, you have specific things under each of those recommendations that would be maybe a good place to start discussion.
Is there a particular recommendation that anyone feels that they would like to discuss first? Shall we take them in order? One, two, three, four? What would be your preference? Mr. Stelfer suggested that we take them in order, so the first one is to engage community partners and families to celebrate the value of all cultures and remove barriers to resources.
How would we know? How would we measure that goal or recommendation? I mean, to celebrate, that's... That verb is... How do we measure that? If they're celebrating or not?
I think the intent of the group was to actually engage community partners in the discussion, so that it wasn't just each group themselves having the discussion, but that it was a shared partnership. So it was more about making sure that we maintain some of the relationships that we have with the different groups. And you could measure that by how many places do we participate? The members of the committee actually sit on a number of boards throughout the community where we could collectively help people feel celebrated and valued by listening and talking and continued communication. So you're right, I don't think you would measure celebration, you would measure the number of partnerships that you have that are committed to the same goal.
Peggy, how do you feel this is different than what we've had in the past? Obviously, we're having issues. So explain to me, maybe if you can, how this may be different this time around and what we can do to make it better?
Right. So in doing the research, the group actually recognized that this work has started a number of years ago with different people, different superintendents, different boards, but that it has continued to come up each time. And I think the general feeling of the committee was that it needs to stay a continued piece of conversation. It's not something that they felt that if you do this, it's fixed and you can check it off, but that it needs to be a continued topic of conversation, a continued focus of interest, and a shared interest, not just something that the school system can do, but the greater community itself in terms of making it a welcoming place for people, broad job opportunities for folks. So where we are specifically today, what I can tell you is that engaging in the discussion with the community members and hearing how they feel and hearing how, what barriers they felt, which is how we started. We started, you know, let's identify barriers to workforce, identify barriers to feeling connected to your community, was a great learning experience, I think, for us. But yet, there was a spirit of wanting to get together to work on it and hear from one another that was in each group. So we learned a lot about each other, we learned a lot about the barriers, and then what this report did was, let's not make it just what we as individuals felt, but we really wanted to give you the research that showed, here are some things that are proven effective, and then how might we move forward in that. So I feel like you have a little more specificity. Would you like more specificity, probably, in terms of who, what, where, when, how, and how much?
I also would like to just add that I believe the process and the structure of how the group was formed is very different than it was in the past. It was, in the past, it was, we're forming this group, everyone, we would like you to join, come if you can, and no one had made a commitment to be on that as a standing committee. This process, we had a charge directly from the elected board, and there was a process of interviewing people, having people apply from the community, and making them feel really valued, that this is something very valuable that they're going to be engaged in. And then furthermore, the, I believe, the previous diversity committees, it was a lot of talk and a lot of discussion and not a whole lot of action. And I feel with this, it's very structured and very specific action statements based on evidence and research. So I believe that's also, the process was very different.
Well, I think it's good to hear that because my thought is that we've been having the same conversations, we've been asking and receiving answers to the same questions, we've been identifying the same obstacles, the same barriers. And so to see recommendations coming forward, suggestions for action steps, I think, are very helpful. And to me, it's for us to sort through to see what can we as a board do and what of these many things should be left to another group or organization within the county or something in partnership with others. Jackie?
The last thing you just said was, when I looked at the A, B, C, and D under Recommendation One, a lot of those are out of our hands. We can't create new businesses in the community, provide affordable housing, we cannot make social connections and so on for them. I think that's some of the things that you said other groups need to handle. Some of the later things, I think, are aimed more at the school system, involve things the school system can do.
Yeah, the group was actually arranged in workforce, education, and community. So there are very definite differences in the recommendations that way. So this was the community group, and their focus really was on engaging the community as a whole, understanding that this is something that is a broader issue than simply what happens in the public school system. But it also, they were committed to joining in that effort and very interested, particularly Rabbi Plost with the Hark and his ability to gather some of the faith-based communities to support in this effort of making families feel welcomed here. And we do have representation in the Business Education Partnerships Committee. I mean, that's a committee that meets routinely. We do participate in On Track and support On Track initiatives, so some of these are saying, continue those.
I know, I can say that when it comes to letter D, the expanding the partnerships, as a result of the connections I was able to make through this diversity group, I've been able to connect with the Bester Community of Hope liaison, Joan Valbuena Hernandez, and in collaboration with her and another church in the Williamsport community, we're in the process right now of creating a partnership where we can have volunteers from the church work through the Bester Community of Hope at Bester and provide adult ESL courses for parents with students there, and we're hoping to provide some childcare so as their, the families are coming to school and dropping off their children who are school age, the moms are able to have childcare for their children. So through that work, that's something that's in the process, and we're going to have meeting number two about that on Thursday.
I'll, bullet number one, create a listening campaign. Can you be more specific as to what you mean by a listening campaign? We're going to partner with civic or community groups to, or what?
And I think that's what the intent was, is that in order to really more fully understand, because we had maybe one representative of each of the various diverse populations in our community, really asking for more information from those, particularly those who may feel less advantaged. So it was making it a purpose to make sure that we sought information from bigger groups of people than just the fifteen that were there.
What specific groups?
So in the group they listed, there's a group, Hagerstown Hopes, there's the Hispanic Association, N W E C P, there's Comunidad Latina, the Benai Synagogue, the Islamic Society, the Council of Three Rivers, American Indian, and the Western Maryland Consortium were some of those that were as examples of who we might reach out to or who we might coordinate with to get information from. That wasn't intended to be exclusive, that was an example of the various types of groups we have. I think in the initial report, we have over 150 faith-based organizations and how many thousand people who are attending those faith-based organizations? So...
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand, right.
Dr. Pugh, I know in the back where it said, help them find affordable housing, help people find affordable... I think partnering with the Hagerstown Area Religious Coalition will help with that because I know, just working through my church, how they have helped people find housing and other needs as well. But I think that would be, that is a good partnership for this diversity.
And I don't think they were saying that they wanted the school system to take it on. I think they were saying they wanted us to be aware that they were there and willing to be a partner, too. So it was a mutual interest.
As I look at those bulleted items, I see one specific office of our school system mentioned, and that would be the Communication Office. As we look at those other bullets, what existing staff or future staff would you see needed to be able to make those things realities, to take the lead in developing those partnerships and maintaining those partnerships? Who on staff, not by name currently, but by position or department, would you see as being the go-tos for those things?
Right. For this one, for Recommendation One, I think we have people in various departments participating because it's an area that focuses for them. For example, Stacy Henson is very active with On Track and the Early Learning Group, and she attends there because they're seeking information from her and making sure they have accurate information. So there's an example, one that's already there. Cody Pine and I attend the Business Education Partnerships because we're looking at connecting high schools with community colleges and businesses so that we have seamless opportunities for students. So that would be a natural one. So I don't know that it was as much creating more as it was continuing those that are and making sure if there are groups that we're not connecting with, one, for example, would be Hark. We don't have someone that I'm aware of on staff who is meeting regularly with Hark to make sure that we're sharing information. So I don't know who would be doing that, but I think it's a shared responsibility, too. We talked about it as not being a, yes, it's not a single office approach because that things get overlooked or one person gets overwhelmed, but that it was, everybody has a responsibility to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students.
Well, we're involved in the homeless population, so, I mean, that's another avenue. We have a person fully dedicated to working with homeless population. I know Jeff Prou and the Food Services Team's been connected to Mike's backpacks, things like that. So we're in a variety of the faith-based community issues and teams of people out there. I guess we just have to find what is the right balance for Washington County Public Schools. We obviously have to build relationships with our community, make them stronger relationships to help educate our children. At some point, we have to figure out when we're a partner, when we're a player, when we're the lead agency. So I think that's the balance and the direction we're looking for from the board, at what role do you want us to play in some of these things? Obviously, you know, my focus wants to continue to be on meeting the needs of the child so they're ready to come to school, just our expansion of pre-K, certainly be a way to address some of the diverse needs of students that are coming from households that might not feel comfortable with school, haven't had a good experience with school, weren't ready for school. So it's just, you know, this thing's all over the place, and I think as Dr. Pugh's pointed out, it's not going to be one person or one department, it's going to involve lots of different people to make contact with various groups and community organizations and things. That's what makes it hard to figure out. If there was, we just hire a person and this was resolved, that'd be easy, but that's, it's not that simple, that I can see.
And I think what they were looking at for us is that we touch all the families who have children. So to make sure that we have the information that's available that parents are seeking, that's often a barrier for them. So access to information about housing, access to information about the various faith-based organizations and what they do. And so to what extent do we get that information and have a process to have that information for new families? We do that very much for our new teachers, and we put out information that talk about the supports that we have for them, the various opportunities that they have. So I think it's a, the request from the community group was, because you're centrally based and you see everyone, could you be a repository for information?
In the interest of time, shall we move on to Recommendation Two? Someone else has something that they would like to say or ask about one? Recommendation Two, create a welcoming, safe, and inclusive environment through education and intentional inclusive practices that recognize the challenges and barriers of unrepresented individuals. Yes, or Mr. Stelfer?
Bullet number two, what, removing access barriers to mental health providers. What barriers exist? What specifically are we talking about there?
So it, each year, we have to go through a process of creating a memorandum of understanding for various community-based organizations to work with our students on mental health issues. And the balance is, how much time are we in instruction and how much time are we with the mental health services that they need? So I think what was happening was, you saw a report last May from Carol Costello about the school-based mental health programs and the updates that we'd had. We do have great partnership with the Maryland Governor's Office for Children, the local management board, the Board of Account and Commissioners, and your, this board, in providing access to mental health. But it's at the triage level, it's at the, when students are really critical and need those services. It's not a broader approach. But they did have a lot of success. If you remember from that report, there was an eighty-seven percent reduction in behavior issues. They served, since its inception, 2,658 students, and of those students, 794 of them were referred for additional services. So it's meeting a need of the top of our students, but we would suggest, and this report would suggest, that there's a need for more services.
I think we also talked about the memorandums of understanding, that there's a process that needs to go through, that, and Dr. Pugh probably knows that process better than I could speak to it. But MOUs are needed every year, and it takes time at the beginning of the year to get those in place, and looking for ways to expand maybe those MOUs to be maybe a longer period of time rather than having to renew on a yearly basis would be an example that we talked about.
Yeah, we also talked about standardizing the form we use. Right now, each individual mental health association uses their own form, and they submit, and so it's a very back-and-forth process between our legal offices and the group. So there are certain standard things that we need to have in an MOU, ensuring the confidentiality and sensitive nature of the records and of the services that they're providing and parent permission. So we think that that could probably be streamlined a little.
Bullet number three there, study, create a work group to study the impact and feasibility of consolidating middle and high schools to regionalize, I guess that's English language magnet centers? Could you give more specifics on that?
So that was our work group that looked at that. There are a couple of school districts in the state of Maryland who offer their English learner services in specific schools, and they've become centralized locations or magnet schools that if students wanted access to the English learner program, they would attend a very specific school to get access to that. So one of the things that our group looked at was what counties were doing the centralized services, what were the outcomes, and was that something that maybe Washington County would be interested in looking at? So the recommendation was to create a work group to study that specifically because there would be lots of moving pieces with that, transportation, funding, programming. What if students wanted to stay at their home school? Then they would have to refuse services, and what could the impact be on the home school with ESSA and new targets for accountability? What could the impact be on that school? Would a school be even able to accept 100 new students? So, I mean, it would be something to consider feasibility-wise. Interestingly enough, in our research, we also found that Frederick County, who had been centralized for years, they had one high school that was centralized, and I believe two middle schools, and they didn't centralize anything at the elementary level, if I recall. Just this year, after we had written our report, they actually have a plan in place to decentralize because it has had a drastic effect on their students, one of the things being transportation, students not being able to access sports at their home school or they were on a bus for a really long time because they were being transported from out of district into their school district. So actually, Frederick now has a plan in place to decentralize their schools. So in a period of a couple of years, all EL students will attend and get their EL services at their home school. Charles County, I believe, two or three years ago, centralized all of their services. And Charles, actually, the English learner program, the types of students and the number of students they have there are very similar to ours. They created a centralized location, but the population is growing, that they needed to open up a second center. So they're actually open, they're opening up, I believe, a second center next year, and they're seeing that maybe that wasn't having the positive effects that they had wanted to as well. So it looks like the model's in place in some districts, and it's working effectively. And in other districts, they're taking second looks at, a second look at it. So that's why, if that was something that we wanted to consider looking at, we would really need a work group to look at all those moving pieces to see, even with the investment in that, what's the return on the investment? And is that really in the best interest of students to centralize their services?
Be interested in hearing more about that.
Thank you. I, looking at the last bullet item, I think this board has demonstrated its interest in wanting to invest in early learning. I think we're committed to doing that as a board, and I know the superintendent is committed to that as well. Looking at those bulleted items that start with create, the first one, creating a diversity advisory committee. I've spoken to that. I think that's something that we should do, and that would be addressed through policy to create another advisory committee instead of diversity. I would like to see that be an equity advisory committee. And I think the other bulleted items, the work groups, I would like to suggest to the board that we direct the superintendent to look into the feasibility of those work groups and ask that he get back to us with information as to how those could best work and when. Those are my thoughts. Anyone else feel strongly about anything there? Mrs. Fisher?
Seeing dollar signs.
What did you say, Jackie?
I keep seeing dollar signs. I just think a lot of these things, at least at this point in time...
There seems to be so much that we have to accomplish, it's so large. Is it more advantageous to maybe pick a few of the more important things and then try to focus on those than to broaden it and weaken it, that we don't see positives in the long run? Because, I mean, like Mrs. Williams has said, we've been talking about this for a long time, and it's so broad across the spectrum of trying to rein all this in. If we just kind of maybe focused on the really, really most top... If we just kind of maybe focused on the really, really most top priority, and then, you know, get those groups together and see some successes and build on those to filter the rest of it down. It just seems so broad to me that, you know, we may not see this for years and years. And we're just, you know, it's disappointing, I'm sure, for the board and for the committees to not see the successes in, you know, big chunks. I mean, I'm just throwing that out, maybe, you know, setting goals for a few things and see how we can accomplish those. And then maybe not spread the money out, you know, that it weakens it, that we don't really see success. Just throwing that out.
Thank you. I'm, Mrs. Fisher, I'm trying to understand where you think that, I mean, obviously, with investing in early learning and pre-kindergarten, that is a significant outlay of money. But I don't know that there's any cost to creating an advisory committee that would address equity, diversity. I think by having the superintendent look at the feasibility of a work group and getting back to us with what that work group would look like, who would constitute the membership, how long that work group would work, under what conditions, and when, how, with what result. I'm not seeing where it would be costly.
Creating the work group would cost money. But if you read the rest of it, create a counseling center with multilingual staff.
So that wouldn't be the recommendation of the work group after, after they've done the work. I mean, it would...
So just, I hear what you're saying about the work group, and that would make a recommendation to then, that would impact a budget. One of the things that we've been looking at is, how do we get some of these things accomplished within the actual work that we're doing right now? With the International Welcome Center, it would really be a pre-enrollment place where families could come to one place, have their documents interpreted. We're not talking staffed by millions, but a very talented staff. And that's one of the things that we've included in our application for our grant. So we're hoping to seek grant funding that could support early learning and literacy that would help our families with enrollment and with that process, and be a welcoming process as part of our literacy grant. So, Mrs. Fisher, to make you feel more comfortable, this isn't saying, you know, if we do this study and we come out with a recommendation that there wouldn't be other ways to do the funding for the service.
How does that work now?
Right now, students report to their home school. So any student from any country, any family speaking any language, goes to the home school to begin the enrollment process. And there are definite services that we have in terms of providing interpretation. But it's also becoming more and more toward our county schools. So students are enrolling in Clear Spring and speaking only French. And so making sure that we're following the process, it's a simple process that we're welcoming the families, is a challenge, because we don't have a French teacher at Clear Spring that can help that student assimilate. So what we're hoping, that it can make families feel more welcoming. It's still the process of the school. The school has to do the work. But we were thinking that it would be a process where people could come here. They would be welcomed. They could fill out all of their enrollment, pre-enrollment. The school would still have to do part of it, but that language barrier wouldn't be a barrier, because the school would have the documentation that they needed. It would come to them already prepackaged. And then they can just be the welcoming face for the student and their family.
And additionally, that person would be an EL community liaison. So in addition to helping with the pre-enrollment, being a notary to help with the multi-housing forms, this person would be connecting with the community. So as the family is coming, we can say we have these community services. So it would actually expand into recommendation one, where we're engaging the community. So we can help families be in touch with the different agencies that they can when they need the support. And then the third per, the third job of the EL community liaison would be meeting with the English, the potential English learner students and doing testing. So we would know before they even enter the school what their English level is. And if they speak Spanish, we have an assessment that we're piling right now, where we can find out what the student's math and reading skills are in Spanish. So when they do arrive at the school, the school has all the information that they need to provide all the services to the student before they enroll and sit in their very first class. So that's very exciting.
And I think too, something that's changed in Washington County, you know, primarily somewhere a population was, would either be centralized here to the Hagerstown area, or maybe to a church where more than one family was coming. So if the school was dealing with five families, they were working through the process. But what's happening now is we have one student or one family show up at a school that hasn't dealt with an English language learner in a long time, or maybe never, and staff's a little confused what to do. So I think one of the purposes of this packet or this information or direction wouldn't be the runaround. We want to be sure that people aren't confused what to do. But be, would be some real clear direction. Let me help you get started on that. Might be a language barrier while we're discussing it, but we have a place to take you, and we're going to get you the help you need to get you enrolled here at the local school. But I do see this, the challenge is, we've suddenly had a child show up in an outlined school. And again, the school's like, we've never had an English language learner student before, an EL student. I do want to report on a success story that I saw today. I was visiting one of our elementary schools. And I maybe, I assume that elementary's a little bit easier for the students to pick up on language and things like that. But I remember when the student came earlier in the year, didn't speak any English at all. Today, I was seated at a table as a first grader, and the student's reading, pretty fluently, is reading. I wasn't clear whether he understood what he was reading. But he obviously was speaking, or obviously was reading the language. I guess if you're reading the language, you're speaking the language. But I was really, really impressed that, from the beginning of the year, because I was standing there with the principal. I remember when the school year started, probably in the first couple of weeks of being there at the school, I stopped by. And they said, oh my, we have this student, I don't want to name the country. It's not anything that would be, it would be something distinguishable. But the young man is reading today in first grade. I mean, right with the other first graders. It was, it was really interesting to see him there with a group of other first graders reading today. So a little bit of a success story.
So if these, excuse me, Mrs. Williams. So these groups that were, these work groups that were looking to form, are these staff that we're pulling and adding more to their day? Or is it, is this community volunteers? What's that look like?
So I think we have information for a work group to discuss it and to share it with leadership, to see where we'd like to move forward. I think that it is more, yes. It's more to someone's day. But right now, the converse of that is, for Paula's Day, what she's doing is trying to piece together the various grants, the various title funds, the various flexible services to try and meet students' needs any way possible. So this gives you a chance to stop and look and think about what some of the effective practices are in other places, and should we or do we want to move in that way? I think what you heard about the, we're not sure whether or not doing centralized was good for the students or good for the system. If you're interested, we can seek more information. We do think the Welcome Center is a good thing to do. But we understand that's dependent on grant funding. So, I answered that correctly?
Well, I think we'll be required to do some of these, whether we call it a work group, or whether it's just a group of people that are working on the needs of our system. I think we'll be doing it one way or the other.
I also wanted to address the other part to Mrs. Fisher's question about funding. So I know the last bullet and recommendation number two, with Dr. Michael, under Dr. Michael's leadership, who's, and your leadership, with the early learning, Title I did write in part of their grant last year that there would be a dual-language learner teacher in all Title I schools. So she works in all the pre-K classes in our Title I schools. And additionally, she is the pre-K EL family community specialist. So she's connecting services with the pre-K families and providing services in those Title I schools. So that's another example where this work has been expanded through grants that hasn't come from the WCPS budget directly. For Title I. This is one person. No, there's one person, and she supports all the pre-K students who are, who've been identified as dual-language learners.
No, one per seven.
Yes, in addition to doing the parent things. And she's doing an outstanding job.
Anything else for recommendation two, or we move on to three? Recommendation three, ensure system, I'm sorry, systemic, ensure systemic equity and access to early, extended, advanced, and a broad range of opportunities.
I think the transportation question, or the bullet point, it says, provide transportation for students. Do we provide that now? Is that something that's going to increase tremendously? Or do you feel it's going to be something that we can afford to handle? I mean, what's that? I mean, that's a, that's going to be a pretty big expense if we're getting a pretty large group of diversity and they're transferring, all transferring over to different schools.
Right, right before we came down here, Amy Selby from Transportation was up in another meeting with the homeless coordinator in that group. Because we are doing really unique things to try and make sure students can access programs that they need to, particularly because McKinley-Vento requires it of us. But we're doing it on an individualized basis, based on the unique situations as we should. I think what the group was speaking of here was, if you have after-school programs, we should be providing transportation. If we have magnet programs, we should provide transportation. Because right now, those who have access are those who can get there to magnet school programs, to after-school opportunities. And yes, that is, right now, it's a matter of drivers and buses and routes, and a strategic plan to have students access all of the programs. And Dr. Michael, you've done this before.
Well, our transportation hub still exists for a high school. It's used pretty limited, but we do have the resources to continue with that. The challenge is that it's not door-to-door service. It does require some, you know, getting to a site or getting to a central site to be transported. So it's difficult to manage that way. Peggy pointed to one of our major problems. Even if we have the funding, having the drivers and having resources is just another challenge separate of that. I do think in this one, we're talking about pre-K. Again, one of our goals still for next year, while we're not completely budgeted, is to try to get pre-K services in every single high school, or every single elementary. So if we can get to all 25 sites, or 20, 24 sites, 25 sites, 26 sites being Eastern, that doesn't, wouldn't have a pre-K. That'll at least allow every student within their home district and have it be all day. Because another one of the barriers we've had prior to this year particularly was that half-day program. So how do I get my child taken care of during the middle of the day? Or taken care of in the morning till they went to the half-day program? So our switch from that 150 or so full-day programs to 700 full-day programs, 700 seats for full-day pre-K this year has been huge. And we're looking to expand that with at least, going from 15 to 20 schools. And what I'm hoping to do is continue to look at our current budget resources, grants, any other means we can, to try to get to all 25 sites by the end of next year. So I think that'll provide the pre-K access. One of the things we certainly want to promote is make sure our low-income students take advantage of our pre-K programs, or special-needs students take advantage of pre-K programs, and our EL population takes advantage of our pre-K programs. So that expansion is significant. If we can pull that off before the end of next year, as we enter into next year, that expansion alone, I think, is going to be a big step forward. Another thing I think we need to take a look at, I think at one time, maybe we had a limited number of students that could participate in a magnet program. But what if we expanded, at least on a limited basis, some other magnet-like programs, where access would be closer to students? So it just wouldn't be, I know when we started, we kind of went with a little bit of the four quadrants, not far-distance quadrants, but kind of spread around our magnet programs a little bit. What if in Eastern was seven or eight rounds of three, four, and five? What if they picked one of their rounds to be a magnet program? That population there at Eastern, and even citywide, might be able to access a bus, or with limited transportation increases, be able to provide more resources to magnet students. I think we've moved other special-needs resources around the county to try to get them in the most densely populated areas that need resources. So I think those types of things, we just do it not only for special ed, but we do it for gifted students as well. I think we're looking to expand programming, something like computer science. Make sure it's available in every school. I think we also need to continue to look at the potential of using technology to spread the wealth of some of the higher-advanced classes to other schools that might not have the teacher. Might need to do that anyhow. What if we're limited on the number of teachers that can teach a specialized program? We have the students, we just don't have the teacher. So we might need to use technology to access the means to spread that into community schools. Again, a child would not have to need special transportation to pull that off. And then any combination we can do is transportation. While the homeschool, or homeschool, homeless transportation's being provided for a student, maybe another student can hop a ride on that bus to get to a magnet school or get to another school with some specialized program. So all those would be things we need to explore. To expand our transportation hub to elementary, middle, and high, on top of the expense, would really be finding the drivers to make that work. But it's certainly something we'd have to continue to explore to meet the needs of our kids.
One of the things that I would like to suggest, and this would require the involvement of the policy committee. I think perhaps it's time for us to develop an equity policy and to look at our policies, all of our policies, and make sure that they reflect equity and access and opportunity. Early on in our work session, Dr. Michael mentioned wanting to raise the academic achievement of all and make sure that we were closing achievement and opportunity gaps, addressing disparities. So I think that by having our policy committee develop a policy on equity and looking at the existing policies to see that we are doing everything we can to make things equitable and make sure all students have access to those opportunities that we feel are important for them to be successful. Might be a good idea for curriculum instruction committee to look at programs and to make sure that we're doing the same things for those programs. But again, I think it's the need for a policy that would be overarching and perhaps really drive what we're doing as a system. Anyone else for recommendation three? Anything you'd like to say? Number four? Oh, yes, Mr. Diallo. Back to three?
No.
Number four, are you ready to go on number four? Okay.
So I guess what, what changes will be done in recruiting so that we can retain a diverse workforce? What are we changing?
So the recommendations here reflect what the research says. But it's also making sure that we are aware of the fact that currently, right now, the scarcity of diverse educators is an issue. It's an issue across the state, it's also an issue nationwide. It's in special education, in gifted and talented, and in your STEM higher-end fields. There just are not qualified candidates. And our data would say the same, based upon who's applying. I think we always want to hire the best, no matter who the best is. We want to make sure that we're maintaining our standard. But I think continuing to reach out to all of the different colleges and working with them to make sure that students understand that Washington County is a great place to work, that they have the information, that they have the recruiting information that shows how they're supported here through mentors and through professional development, and an investment in them as people. I think that this, this step here has gotten the most conversation in recent years. It is something that every district looks at. One of the, one of the pieces that... One of the pieces that you asked, what would be different, is one of the unique suggestions that the group felt was powerful was the whole idea of grow your own. You know, we have teacher academies in two schools. We also have Tech High. We have a childcare program that could be transitioned to be more of an education field to try and build that group of students who are from here and who are diverse, who might want to come back or stay here. And making sure that the pathways for those students are clear, that they understand that they can start at HCC and go to Frostburg, or that they can go right into Hood, or that they can go right into Shepherd, and what the costs associated with that are. So trying to really encourage our own was probably the most exciting strategy that we discussed.
From the teacher academy?
We have both. We have students who were here and went away and came back. But we also have students who participated in the teacher academy. I don't have the exact information, but we did read it. I'll look for that and make sure I get it to you.
Another area where we've had some successes, not only growing students, but growing pair professionals and giving them training and going back to school, or providing them on the job training to, that would lead to certification. I know within my department, in the English learner department, we've hired several folks as English language tutors through Title III grants who became impassioned about it and went back to school, and then we were able to hire as a full-time teacher. So that's another avenue for growing our own too, is investing in our people.
At almost every meeting we have, the question becomes, are we, now, well, everybody thinks we are, are we having any results? Are we getting people of color applying? Are we hiring people of color? And it's not happening. What is it? I don't know what it is. Personally, I think I know, truthfully, but I don't have the data to support my belief. But, still relationships with colleges, we have a set group of colleges that we work with, fine and dandy. But we're still not getting out of those what I would like to see. Coordinator of Human Resources, I'm not an equity recruiter. Our people understand that. I don't think we need one individual. You know, I think Terry and our department that go and do the recruiting and go, you know, visit the colleges, they understand what we're looking for, what we would like to get. So, you know, I'm still befuddled. It's still a huge problem.
And I think that's what we looked at when we were looking at the population data, the census data, our student makeup, our employee makeup. And, you know, obviously, having disparate numbers doesn't mean, doesn't equate to discrimination necessarily.
I'm not, actually, I'm not. That's the last thing that I think is happening.
Right.
I just, I don't see results. You know, as hard as our people may be working, we're not getting. So.
And it's not just diversity either, it's teachers in general right now.
I was going to say, you know, it's a reader challenge. I'm not disputing any of that, but the bottom line is for six years, that's something that we've asked about, you know, how do we get more diverse teaching staff? And, you know, Peggy, we've been, you know, talking about this for a long time. It's just, I don't know if it's any fault of anybody, I'm not trying to lay blame, I'm just looking at the results and they're not there. We're not getting that. And I think in some ways, in some of our schools, we need that desperately. You know, kids need, every now and then, look up and see somebody that looks like them, somebody that they can connect with.
So the data that we have, and this was February 23rd, excuse me, 2017, so it's one year old. In elementary school, out of 121 applicants, 90% of them were white. And 83% of them were female. So not only do they not have students who look like, or people who look like them, the male-female in elementary school is also a disparity. In high school, we had 87 applicants, 81% of them were white. In middle school, 78 applicants, and 83% of them were white.
What is your applicants?
Applicants, people who applied.
They need to be hired.
Right, and I mean, that's the, that's the, I don't have that, but I do know that the percentages are low when you're looking at who's applying. And if you have a very small pool with, from which to begin to select, and you're looking for the very best candidates.
The colleges that we primarily recruit from, how many non-white students are enrolled in teacher education?
Programs, correct.
There can't be that many, probably.
Well, and I think HR has expanded to.
Two. There are two predominantly black or of color, I'd say it that way, schools that we're working to try to, try to.
Salisbury?
No.
Being teachers?
I think it was Maryland Eastern Shore.
Morgan. Yes. And Morgan State.
Morgan State.
Heard that one, so I've never heard of one.
So there's a whole list of universities that target that, but the question is, how many, how many are in that program? And I can tell you right now, when we were looking for elementary school teachers, pre-K teachers in the middle of the year, and Frostburg had four in their program, that's a challenge. And we had openings, and we have the support available for them. So I think the community recognized too, that this is, they need, we need to make sure that our community is seen as welcoming and opening and that we have a variety of opportunities available here, not just in education, but job-wise for families to come in.
Dr. Pugh, can I just ask, our pair pros are a little bit more diverse.
Correct.
And I think supporting them to become teachers is a very good idea because they get so much experience. They get to see every type of teaching. I worked with so many great teachers and learned so many different things about being a teacher. And I think that's a very important thing that we ought to look at and endorse, support.
I also wanted to interject because while the information that you provided, Dr. Pugh, tells us only some parts of the story, and we know that diversity is many things. We know that it is not just skin color. We know that it is not also gender, but it can be age, it can be sexual orientation. There are so many faces to diversity. It's, that's what makes it beautiful with the diversity. So I think the way that we may be tracking diversity, we only have two things that I heard today, and that was gender and color. So I just want to give a personal anecdote about why I think this is important, because I was extremely happy, a while ago, we hired a wonderful teacher. She was born in a different country. She grew up speaking a different language and then moved to another country where she learned a second language. And then she came to the United States as a teenager, not knowing any English, and graduated from an English learner program in another state, in another school district. Very diverse woman with diverse experiences, having been a refugee herself. She's not represented in that because she's Caucasian. So she's extremely diverse, but I think that that's only painting part of the picture, and we would need a little bit more information to talk about what, how the staff that we are employing now have different diverse backgrounds and experiences.
By my watch, it's three o'clock. Is there anything else that anyone would like to add to the conversation? I see this as the first of several conversations and perhaps work sessions. I thank Mrs. Moore and Dr. Pugh for your thoughts and clarifications and answers to our many questions. Is there anything as a board that you think we should be moving on immediately?
Well, I think the work that we're doing with pre-K, we're moving forward in it now. Obviously, Dr. Michael was very intense about accomplishing this. Good starting point as far as what we can really get into right now.
I think another area that might be underestimated right now is our work with advanced placement, as we're looking for students, non-traditional students to be in advanced placement programs. Also, our work with magnet students to make sure that we're identifying giftedness in a variety of different ways. We've got a whole effort going with that right now to make sure we're discovering children that may have, may not have been traditionally identified as gifted or promoted themselves, or parents that promote themselves as being gifted, that we're making sure that we discover their giftedness and offer them an opportunity to participate.
I see the employment of teachers being a huge issue in the coming years. In our committee, we talk about that a lot, and the research that we come back and we're hearing there's less and less. I think we really need to pour some good minds into trying to figure out how we can get our own folks through an academy, get our own pair professionals up through the ranks to teaching and supporting them through some type of scholarship funds or how to get them through to colleges. And maybe piggyback, I know Mrs. Fisher brought this up, about helping scholarships for those folks and getting them to contract with us for a few years after, and then really building that relationship. Because I think once you build that relationship with your school, teachers will buy into, I really want to be a part of this. And if we support that and keep that in the forefront, I think, you know, we may maybe stifle off a little of that need all the time. Because I mean, everyone in that committee, they're saying every school is down and they need more teachers and they're not, it's not, they're not there. So we need to grow our own, so like the program says, so maybe we really need to focus on when that is a priority also.
I think we've obviously had some success with any number of IAs that have become teachers. So maybe we try to work that harder to grow our own teachers and also expand our diversity of our workforce. I mean, that's a tangible thing that we actually could look at a little bit more closely. Because we have had, I mean, it's a handful, but it's probably maybe a dozen now that have been IAs. I don't, I might be misquoting that number over the last 10 years or so, but since that's been implemented as a possibility, we've had any number of people. I can remember a secretary that went back to work and earned her teaching degree and finished her career as a teacher.
I think we should, I think Mike had a very good idea a while ago, you know, this is a broad gamut of things, and pick out those things that can be easily instituted, like the current commission's doing, pick out those things that don't cost a lot of money to start with and so forth. And especially focus on those things that focus on instruction and achievement. I mean, that's the main goal. And then worry about some of the other caveats a little bit later.
Anyone else? Mr. Stelfer, you've had the last word. Thank you again, ladies.
Thank you.